Finance Administration. Here is an action item to approve the minutes, item 1A. Is there a motion to approve? Do I have a second? Are there any changes, comments? Hearing, none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. The minutes are approved. We'll now go to item, action item 1B, the policy calendar. B1 is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023-24 university budget request. The university is seeking approval from the board of trustees to request additional operating funds of $339 million in the state of New York and $80 million in the city of New York as an investment in the university. In addition, the university is also requesting $983 million in fiscal year 2024 for capital projects to provide up-to-date facilities to further our mission as part of a five-year capital plan totaling $5.5 billion. And now I'll call on our chancellor to make a presentation in support of this item.
Thank you, Chair Ferrerick. Great to be here with all the committee members. And are you handling this okay? And delighted to begin the relay of this presentation, which I'm going to be joined by our COO, our University Provost, our CFO, our Vice Chancellor for Human Resources, and also for facilities and construction. The budget request that we present to you is constructed upon work that we've been doing over the last couple of years, but really built around the SUSTLY Release strategic framework and is really anchored on Acuity that reemerges from this couple of years of the pandemic stronger and really focused on our role as the indispensable partner to the city to help advance the city and the state's recovery goal. So, next slide.
Sorry, I'm trying. This one or the one before, Phil?
I think the one before is an empty slide, so I think that this will be, this will be fine. And our values and our visions, those are the four themes or goals under which we organize our strategic roadmap that I'll describe in more detail in a second, to become a national partner, national leader in higher ed education access for diverse student populations, the students that we serve at CUNY, to amplify our ability to exceed the predicted student outcomes and eliminate equity gaps. We all, we demonstrated the university, our key role in social mobility. We want to be able to eliminate those equity gaps for the students that come through our system, to advance our community through comprehensive research engagement and service, and finally, to modernize the CUNY system. In the next slide, highlights our budget request. The request is an increase of 16% in state support and 13% in city support over the budget request that we presented to you last year, with a total of $419 million in new operating funds. The request recommends a tuition freeze for the next academic year, and just for historical sake, this would be the eighth year that we have not raised tuition for the community colleges. The last increase there was in the fall of 2015. So, eight years of no tuition increases in our community colleges and four years of no tuition increases in our senior colleges. So, those years of the tuition increases go far back in our history. And in the capital side, a request of $983 million as part of our five-year plan that seeks to get to $5.5 billion at the end of that five-year timeframe. Next, please. So, these are the areas of programmatic investment, enrollment and retention. The board has made it very clear that enrollment is an important issue for us, and it is not, we're in the Committee for Fiscal Affairs, it is not just on fiscal matters, it is about the opportunity of New Yorkers to be able to realize their professional dreams and be able to participate fully with credentials or knowledge in the New York City's economy. And we've also talked about the important role that retention is going to play in making sure that we keep that promise. Graduation outcomes, tied up to retention, the online and the multimodal program development, big push, big interest from this board on expanding our online capacity. Workforce skills and outcomes, internships, making sure that we're connected to the career outcomes of our students, the public impact of service, research, and scholarship, and again, that theme of modernizing CUNY, and I'll be going in a little bit more depth in each of these six programmatic areas. In enrollment and retention, an investment in our faculty, in pedagogy and faculty development. Faculty are key anchors to the work that we do. I have said to you before, and I repeat it again, also that improved teaching leads to retaining students and better student success outcomes, and we have often not accentuated this role as much. And we saw how important pedagogy was when we transitioned in the pandemic to online instruction in the middle of the pandemic. We also, in that investment in our faculty, you will see in our budget request that we want to continue to expand our faculty fellowship program. It's been a program that we've had particularly for faculty of color to be able to be retained. We have great mentors from the faculty who are part of that program. We also want to use technology to provide the students with a seamless admission, registration, and financial aid progress, not to have that sort of be segregated and separated. When we had the years of enrollment growth, it was not that the demographics in the city were growing, it was the Department of Education, which is our main feeder, was doing a better job at graduating college-ready students, and we were able to capture that. So, we want to be able to continue to do a very good job in capturing all those 80% of the DOE graduates that come to CUNY with a new portal that's going to make it easier for them, for their families, for their advisors to follow up on an application, a streamlined application that we're going to be preparing for the students, early financial aid awards given to those students so that they have a good sense about the packaging that they're getting and the great deal that they're getting from CUNY in terms of education that for many of them will come at no cost. Streamlining the transfer process, something that we have taught here at length with our board. Our provost is leading a process that will be engaging the faculty in a way that we establish course equivalencies that align the curriculum for a smooth transition and standardizing also some of the practices that we have on transfer that right now might exist as policy but are not really followed across the board throughout the system. The other underutilized avenue that we want to make sure that we invest on is after the DOE, the second largest recruitment mechanism that we have for our degree programs come from our adult and continuing it students that we have within our own system, right? If we facilitate the path for those students to come from continuing it into degree-seeking, those are students who are already familiar to the university, are in our campuses, are benefiting from that, but we need investments both in technology and personnel to be able to make that correlation happen, and then also an investment in graduate education. We want to be able to augment the stipends and the fellowships that we provide for our graduate students, increasing the support for our doctoral students, right, which also end up teaching in many of our sections, end up being hired as many of our faculty members, many of them stay in our city as faculties for our great university. And we also want to make an investment in hiring additional faculty, particularly faculty that have a robust research agenda to continue that mission of research for the university. On the next one, we have graduation outcomes, and again, I'm going to run through this, and if you have any questions, happy to take them with more detail. We need to invest in more academic and career advisors. That's really speaking to our retention part of the equation. If the students who are here do not have the additional support from individuals that are very cognizant about careers, about career pathways for the students, if we don't have individuals who are knowledgeable about the courses they have to take, the sequences that they have to take, and all those things, they're not going to be able to advance in the way that we want to. We've also seen where we have made investments in some particular programs, think about ASAP with the inclusive advising, how much that pays off, so we want to be able to expand the number of personnel that we have advising students academically and in careers. We also want to equip those individuals with the best technology. We know that we're not going to be able to have enough resources to hire as many people to do that, but with technology, there's a lot of things that can be done that, A, the students can use on their own and their own time that provide them information about potential career opportunities. If you have this interest, it's a career that you might be able to follow, it gives you information of where you are academically, based on where you are in your GPA, it gives you advice, right? And then technology that then sends them to connect with an advisor that then is a person that they can have a more in-depth conversation. But we have tons of data points. We have invested, for example, in a system that works with our four-year schools, it's not the same system that talks to our community college. We want to be able to have an integrated platform so that we have all that information available to our students, particularly when we know that in many of our senior colleges, 50, 60% of those students are transfer students. Right, so we want to be able to leverage technology in that way. We, as part of that, ACE, which is the program that we have at John Jay Lehman and Meghav Evers, which is an experimentation version of ASAP for our four-year schools, has had some very, very great results so far. The funding for ACE comes from yearly appropriations from the city, comes from philanthropy. We want to be able to baseline what we have right now so we can continue to have data that can come back to this group and tell us what is the program that we should be scaling up or learning from some of the components to use in other programs and part of the university. And then student will be. We knew that we needed to invest more, for example, on mental health prior to the pandemic. The pandemic has only exacerbated the need for that kind of support. One of the things, even though in this component talks about student well-being, we've also, you will see in the budget request, talk about additional mental health support for our faculty, our staff, because they've also been through a lot in the pandemic, and to be able to be the mentors, the educators that they want to be for students, we also need to be able to support them during this very, very difficult time. There's other parts of impediments that derail our students from graduating, which we know that do not have to do necessarily with academics, food insecurity, housing insecurity, things of that matter. We know that it derails a lot of our students, so we are, we want to fund the Bronx Care, which is a pilot that we have in our three Bronx schools, as a model of a comprehensive approach, to be working with students in all those areas, leveraging either existing city resources, right? We encourage our students who might be qualifying for SNAP to take advantage of that, right? So, it's more money in their pockets, and then connecting with many of the nonprofits that provide some of the things that we do not have, like in the area of housing insecurity, connecting them to the agencies in their community that might be able to support it, and creating a culture of belonging, which we know will lead to better retention and better outcomes for our students. Next. Online, something that we've talked about in this board, and we were able to get a jumpstart using the stimulus money to get the CUNY line program, and now, under the leadership of the provost and of Kim, a national expert who's going to be able to really take us to the next level in terms of increasing the number of programs that we have online. It's not just about courses, it's about fully online programs. We know that many adults, and it's a market that we're trying to attract back to the university, prefer online programs as the best way for them to reengage with higher ed. We know that 50% of the market, for example, in master's programs, is all online, so we need to be able to compete there. We have excellent faculty, we have excellent programs, we need to make that transition to online, leverage our brand, then to be able to increase enrollment, and also to be able to meet our students and our citizens in New York City, where they are in terms of the demand that they might need. For our current students, it is about the modality that fits their best, not just where they are in their lives, but also the best way that they learn. If you're a learner that is more comfortable with online, then we should have that opportunity available for you. If you're someone that face-to-face engagement is really the way that you're going to thrive, then we should be able to have that available for you and make sure that our faculty are training the pedagogy to be able to do that in whatever modality is available to the students. And again, continue to invest in our faculty, in pedagogy, and in supporting them in their journey. We know that they want to be the best teachers they can be for students. Many of them in their graduate education is not something that they're trained for, so we need to validate that and provide that training for them. On the next slide, workforce skills and employment outcomes. You probably are tired by now to hear my interest in expanding internships for our students. We need to be that connector that lets our students explore the world of work. We create opportunities, and opportunities that put monies back on their, you know, on their pocket, right? And allows them, it's an additional form of financial aid, of retention, of support for our students, and they begin to build the social network, the social capital that they need to be able to make informed decisions about where they want to go. And as I shared with you before, we have data, the students who participate, in paid internships tend to stay on track, graduate on time, and when they go to the job market to look for a job, they're quicker to get a job, and their first-time pay is higher, which is the kind of outcomes that we want for all our students. We, in the aliving of the curriculum with skills and companies that help the students, you know, obtain jobs, is part of sort of going back and making sure that our curriculum is current, working with our faculty so that the opportunities to engage in industry, in the sectors where it's relevant, to make sure that they have the feedback loop to get the kind of material that the job market is needing, and then also work on programs like the careers across the curriculum, right? Which, what it does is work with faculty in all disciplines, so that all disciplines, when you're teaching, you are aware of career outcomes, and you try to make sure that in whatever class you're teaching, there are some of those career outcomes that can be helpful to the student, whether you're teaching anthropology, whether you're teaching STEM, whether you're teaching English, that that's part of the. And we have Kathy Davidson, a distinguished professor, as part of our Office of Transformation, really engaged in talking to faculty about this, and with the support of the faculty center, we've sent a survey to our faculty to see what they feel about their role, how can be supportive in helping our students connect with the world of work. In, you moved too fast for me, Christina, give me one second. That might be a hint, but I'll move quickly. We want to continue to expand our collaboration with industry. We've been very successful with the model of the tech-in-residence, bringing individuals who are, in this case, in the world of technology, coming and serving as adjuncts and, you know, engaging our faculty, getting to know our faculty. It's a great way for our faculty to be connected with industry. Our students seek out opportunities. We want to expand that in other areas of work so that we have individuals that are not necessarily full-time faculty, they come and teach, right, but they're role models for our students, they connect our faculty and our programs with them, and they become recruiters, becomes easier for students to then be applying to those companies, because we have people there who know the kind of talent that we have in our university and can serve as connectors there. We want to continue to expand the CUNY Inclusive Economy, which we launched with the support of the mayor, which is both money from the city and money from private industry, that is building on that pipeline of hybrid advisors, both academic and career-wise, industry specialists embedded in departments, embedded in the campuses, making sure that those connections to industry are occurring, and that those opportunities for students, for apprenticeships, for internships are readily available. Then, now, the next one, please. Thank you, Christina. And one of the things that we want to do, and for those of you who were part of the Recent Innovation Subcommittee meeting last time, you were informed that this quarter is the best quarter CUNY faculty has had in history in terms of grants received from federal, city, and state agencies, right? So, we know there's a faculty out there who is eager to be conducting their research and doing their work. We need to incentivize and support them. One way to do that is to modernize and streamline the grant proposal and management process. All those things tend to be done college by college. We don't have a centralized way to track that, and it's not a centralized mechanism to just be watching our people, it's to facilitate encounters between faculties, to be able to facilitate collaboration, to have the data that we need to make investments on different campuses, on different areas. Right now, we do paper tallies of the proposals that go out, and so with this modernized system, we'll be able to have the data that we need to support our faculty, to get them to work together, and to see where our investments in like, in seed money for faculty so they can generate proposals, seed money to get faculty to work in research projects across the university, right, which is going to have a bigger chance of success. A lot of the federal and particularly federal agencies want to see collaboration between campuses. We have an advantage in many, for example, proposals, they want to have faculty from research-intensive colleges and community colleges participating together. We have an advantage because we have that built in into our system, so let's capitalize on that to be able to position our faculty to even bring more grants, which are more employment opportunities for our students, is more money to our state, and it advances our whole research mission of the university. We have a program, for example, of undergraduate research with students who are in associate programs, right? A pipeline of students so that we have a much more diverse set of faculty on the research side, beginning at the community college, then transferring to our four-year colleges. And one gem that we have in the system is our CUNY Medical School, which is focused on serving primary care, is focused on physicians that are going to be serving our urban areas. They were key in the pandemic. Our first graduating class in the medical school had to graduate early to be able to serve in the thick of the pandemic. They were very volunteering, right? It's a gem that we need to secure additional investment so that those students can be fully supported. And it is a great mechanism because by being embedded into city college, right, those are students that do not have the MCAT as a barrier, and it leads to us having, for example, probably the most diverse medical school in the country. We want to be able to invest more in our medical school, and we also know that 78% of the graduates from the medical school stay serving here in New York City, right? So, when we have a crisis in the number of physicians, particularly serving urban areas, our medical school is part of the solution, so we want to invest there. The final slide on this part is modernizing the CUNY system. We want to be able to leverage all the best-in-class approaches that we have in our system, leverage our scale to be able to be more efficient, more nimble, and to do that. I'm going to then now yield the floor to our CFO, Christina Chapa, so she can wrap this modernizing part and lead us to the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Chancellor. The other piece of the modernizing that the CUNY system really relates to, the state of good repair and backlog of deferred maintenance is. So, we're going to be asking both operating funds in order to get to the state that we need to be. I think right now we have about 8%, our buildings are considered to be in a state of good repair, and we're working towards to increase that to 55% by 2008. So, there's an element of the operating budget, and when I go to the capital budget, there's also an element of the capital budget that also addresses that. So, moving on, I'm going to just take it back a little bit. So, the chancellor just finished talking about the, and I helped a little bit then, right, the program act section. So, of course, that section really addresses how to move the university forward and to meet mission and strategic priorities, but also, we took a little bit of a different spin this year in that we really tried to focus on initiatives that would also positively impact, you know, recruitment and retention to increase enrollment. So, I know the chancellor covered a lot of that. The second area of the budget request really talks about mandatory needs, and that section aims to support the university's funding stability. And this year, we also have a third section, which we're calling strategic initiatives, which is really focusing on addressing the university's structural imbalance. So, you could see on this slide here, where a Phil mentioned this, we're asking about $419 million from both the city and state to support our senior community colleges. And you see the majority of those funds, the $209 million, is in the programmatic request filed by mandatory needs, $99 million, and $111 for strategic investments. So, our mandatory needs request really focuses on new and incremental costs that the university is projected to incur in fiscal '24. The one thing I do want to point out is that there are some zeros on the community college side, and what this request reflects are amounts that are not funded already. So, the city has already funded our energy and our collective bargaining costs, and that's why there are zeros for those amount. But what I wanted to mention here is that the city and state have generally funded our fringe benefit cost increases, but not fully our collective bargaining or our step increases that are salary increments, as we also call them step increases, that are embedded in the contracts that we have. So, we are asking the state and city to both fully fund both those amounts in fiscal '24 and also going forward. And the final section of the budget request is the strategic request, and we're asking for two items on this. One is to baseline the $40 million of non-recurring funds that were received from the state in the '23 enacted budget, and the second one is to support, funding to support the education of our STEM majors. You know, both the city, the state, and CUNY, you know, recognize the importance of same majors. We have about 45,000 students that are in those majors, and obviously, having those students are really good for the state and city economy as well as CUNY. STEM and health majors really have, they're one of the highest-growing fields, you know, according to the Labor Bureau's statistics, and they have great financial outcomes, right? The graduates of those majors tend to have a premium of wages coming right out of the couch, and that also continues. But, not on the downside, but they are more expensive to educate, right? So, a lot of STEM and health majors, they have smaller class sizes because they have labs and it's more intensive, and also the faculty in those disciplines tend to be paid more. So, we are also requesting money from the state and city to help support the university and invest in those, you know, those more costly but very important majors. All right, so I'm going to move right into the capital budget. Before I do that, I'll go on the last thing. So, here's the summary of the $419 million. I think Phil mentioned that, these numbers before, but we are the state support requesting I think Phil mentioned that, these numbers before, but we are the state support requesting additional $339 million, and the city requesting additional $80 million. All right. So moving on to the capital request. So really, the university's capital request is aligned with and supports university's strategic priorities, where some of them are listed here on this slide. Enhancing modernized space to inspire student success, building physical environments that prepare students for New York City changing economy, strengthening the university's infrastructure, and reducing our carbon footprint. The university's budget request reflects a commitment to undertaking projects to maintain and improve the university's infrastructure that is essential to student success, recapture underutilized spaces, improve technology, and provide for campus expansions. The next slide here shows a breakout. We're asking for $983 million in fiscal '24. That's part of a $5.5 billion capital plan. And sticking with the theme of three, there are really three themes here for the capital request. It's the CUNY-wide, which is both the senior and the community colleges. There's information technology initiatives. And then there are campus-specific projects. So the first slide here really talks about the CUNY-wide initiatives. These are both relate to the senior and the community colleges. We just have highlighted a couple of items on this slide. I just want to mention a couple of things. One is the HVAC. You know, we're asking about $69 million in just 2024 for HVAC. This is one of our top priorities. We had an engineering firm that came in and did an analysis of that and identified areas that we need to improve on. And that's going to be one of our priorities coming up for fiscal '24. The other area I just wanted to mention of this list of, you know, priorities is really the emergency management equipment. You know, the university has, and New York City has been impacted, seems like more so recently, mostly weather-related emergencies. You know, we have to, typically, once those emergencies happen, we have to bring on costly consultants in order to remedy the emergencies. And we're asking to be funded for emergency equipment, such as generators, tree and prun removal equipment, and pumping equipment. So I just want to highlight those couple of items. Moving on to the technology initiatives, we have seven kind of broad groups of category here. This is closely in line with the presentation that was performed by Vice Chancellor Formoso at last Wednesday's Technology Subcommittee. So these, the funding request aligns with his priorities. I just want to mention that in the budget request, there's more detail on all these on page 25 and 26. But I just want to mention a couple of things here. One is the next-generation academic administrative systems. This is essentially a replacement of the PeopleSoft system, which has end of life in 2032. And I think we spoke about this project a couple of times at this committee. There's two phases. Phase one is the replacement of HR and finance system. And phase two is of the student administration functions. The other couple of things I wanted to mention, one is, one of the big priority for us is really, as Seb also mentioned, is really cybersecurity. And this request is really a multifaceted effort to identify potential risks that threaten our assets, both the universities and the colleges, and implement strategies to mitigate the risk. And the last two, the last two items on this, the cloud consolidation initiatives and identity management consolidation, is really trying to consolidate a lot of the work of the colleges centrally, including the data centers and other storage devices. All right. And then the last real bucket, and this is going back to the state of repair, is really these campus-specific projects, right? So we have these overall, these overall campus-wide things, and these get very specific to the campus. So there's about 110 individual projects that are in our plan over the five-year period, the five-year budget request. Really, the priority, as I mentioned before, is the state of good repair. And then this is the capital side of that operating request. So we've highlighted these six projects here. You know, these are some of the notable and significant examples of projects that both address the state of good repair and also, you know, comprehensive programmatic modernization. So again, more details are written about all these projects in the budget request on page 24 and 25. And also, we have Chief Operating Office Hector Baptista and Vice Chancellor Mohamed Tila are here if you have any specific questions on these or other projects. And that's it. You're done? Yeah, I'm done, sorry.
Are there any questions?
No, that was clear.
Mr. Hannon?
So I actually have a few questions, but I'll start off with the simplest one. What's the plan for tuition freeze beyond one year?
We do the budget on a yearly basis. So the budget request that we have is dealing with the tuition for the next year.
Is it okay to ask another question?
Sure.
So regarding the PeopleSoft replacement RFP, so we have, we have student representation on the committee for that RFP. Last time, we had an RFP committee for a technological software, which was to be used university-wide, was the RFP, which was concluded in adopting D2L as the successor to our Blackboard platform. But there was no student representation on that RFP. So moving forward, are we going to have student representation on this RFP?
So the answer to your question is yes. And in this particular RFP, we did have a student member. We had the previous chair of the Student Senate, who was appointed to that, I mean, to the Student Senate, who was appointed to the committee. And obviously, going forward, we will continue to have student representation. But you should know, these two particular RFP have to do with the financing and HR, right? They're focused on those two particular areas.
Is there another question? Is there anyone who hasn't had an opportunity yet? Mr. Hannon?
Regarding CUNY Medical School, currently, the CUNY Medical School only has BSMD program and no standalone MD program. Are there any plans moving forward for the medical school to offer a standalone MD program?
I don't know. I mean, remember that the medical school is fairly also young, right? So I think that they're really trying to consolidate the model they already have before they expand, but happy to take any suggestions and feedback back to President Budrill and Dean Green. And Mr. Hannon, maybe you want to pose that question in another committee?
I think there's one question that might be relevant to this committee, if I can ask one more.
Sure.
Regarding the new contract that's going to come up for 2023 regarding the current collective bargaining agreement ending in that point, what's the current status of the collective bargaining regarding the step raises for moving forward beyond 2023?
I, if you're looking at me, I have no idea how to answer your question.
On an annual basis, we've had a 2% step raise for the previous five years, from 2018 to 2023. Moving forward beyond 2023, what is that structure going to look like for step raises?
That would have to be the result of the collective bargaining work that we do together with our colleagues in labor.
Thank you.
That's not us. That's not the committee, and that's not the Board of Trustees unilaterally. Okay. Trustee Berger?
The city has already announced pegs. How is that going to affect our current budget, our future budget, our budget request? I mean, you know, one of the concerns we've had is when there have been these across-the-board cuts, which I think we're insane with the, you know, the campuses go for the low-hanging fruit, which is to stop cleaning the bathrooms and a lot of the maintenance stuff. And it comes back to bite us on the ass because what we don't spend now is going to cost us more in the future. So, you know, have we got a plan to deal with the pegs? I understand there's a, they're over 4% next year. Is that what that would work for? I just know what I'd need in the papers.
Yeah, so I think, so, well, there was something new announced today, but we, so far, we had a 3% cut this year, fiscal '23, and that goes up to 4.75% next year. Today, there was announcement that there will be another, there has been another cut. And we're, so we haven't been able to digest that overly much, but, so something new has come out today also.
Is that something we build into our budget request, ask a little more, so I can take it back?
Well, I mean, the request asks for an increase of a 13% of our last year, too. So we are going to be out there sort of lobbying for the resources that we need, right? And the request will be our tool to be able to make our case going forward. And the fiscal climate in the city is tight, and we'll sort of have to do our lobbying within the context of that.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to note, I noticed particularly the request for increased advisement. And as we've been discussing, retention particularly, and, you know, the effective advisement has had within, for example, the ASAP program. I mean, that's just so important, that has to be a priority.
Couldn't agree more, trustee. Anyone else? Okay. I'll move approval of item B1. May I have a second? Is there any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Item B1 is approved. Item B2 is a resolution to authorize a revised higher education emergency relief fund allocation plan. The individual university colleges are the recipients of federal stimulus funding, including those from the coronavirus, the acronym we have, and the American Rescue Plan, to help partially offset the financial hardship brought on by the pandemic. The Board of Trustees approved the City-University of New York plan to utilize CRISA and ARPA funds in June 2021 and '22. These plans include specific uses for the student support and retention, reopening revenue loss, mental health services, online program development, and faculty professional development. University is requesting the Board of Trustees to approve the revised college plans for using the CRISA and ARPA funds. I'll now call on Vice Chancellor and interim Vice Chancellor and interim CFO Christina Chappa for a presentation on the item.
Thank you. So I just wanted to just do an overview of the federal funds and then also talk about the revised plan that we're asking for. So overall, CUNY receives federal funds over three rounds of emergency relief funds. We call them HERF funds. The first, that was the CARES Act in March 2020. And the last one was what we call ARPA in March 2021. The only other thing I want to mention here, so although the last American Rescue Plan Act was from March 2021, there was some supplemental funds that were made available to the university that was approved by this board. The use of that was approved by this board at the last meeting. So high level, we received just under $1.6 billion of federal funds, and they really came in three different buckets of funds. The institutional, which is funds that would be used by, can be used by the colleges, minority-serving institution funds, which also could be used by colleges, and then student emergency grants, which were funds that went directly to the students. So over the course of receiving these funds, the board of this body and the Board of Trustees approved actually five different plans on how they were going to use these funds as we received the money. So I just want to talk really very briefly about the methodology and just, so the USDOE made the determination of what each college was getting and then communicated that to us. So the funding format they used for institutional and student emergency grants was heavily weighed towards colleges, who had higher levels of percentage of students who received Pell. And for the minority-serving institutions, there was institutional methodology, there was a floor that was used in order to determine if a college was going to get it. So the CUNY, the university, none of the colleges had any involvement in methodology. They just communicated the amounts to us. So moving on, I just want to speak briefly about the student emergency grants. So again, we had three different rounds of funds. We are about to give out the last, the supplemental American Rescue Plan funds, which is about $11.2 million. We made about $1.3 million payments to students over this period. All of those were done centrally. So moving on, so on the college detail, I also want to mention that with Inumaterials, you had another packet. And I'm going to be going over some numbers, and this packet, if you're interested, has all the detail by college. So to date, we have claimed 74% of institutional MSI funds. So we, again, the institutional MSI amount was $942 million. We claimed $696, and we have $245 left to claim by June 30. So how we use those, these funds, if you could see here, we use about $260 million to defray the costs of pandemic-related expenses, which includes things like technology, health and safety, mental health, online program development, student retention initiatives. We use about $336 million claiming lost tuition revenue and appropriation revenue. About $101 million went towards our student forgiveness program, the CUNY Comeback. And like I mentioned before, about $245 million is left claimed. I just want to mention really quickly that what lost revenue really means is the, the feds allow us to determine the amount of revenue that we had pre-pandemic and compared to the current pandemic. And for instance, the revenue for tuition, we'd be allowed to take what was generated in 2019 versus 2022. So as I mentioned before, we have until June 30, 2023, in order to use the funds. We have set an internal deadline of March 31, so that we can ensure that every single penny is claimed, you know, on behalf of the colleges. The other thing I just want to mention, so although we do have $245 million left to claim, we've done some early estimates on the lost tuition revenue that we anticipate for this upcoming year, and that exceeds that amount by 250. So I guess my point is here is that most of the colleges, their remaining federal stimulus funds will be used in order to claim lost revenue. And finally, I just want to go back to what the resolution is asking. So as I mentioned before, there were about five plans that went to the board. The original one was the CARES Plan. The most recent one was the Supplemental ARP Plan, American Rescue Plan. We're not asking for any updates to those. One of them, because we satisfied and completed, the CARES were done with, and we spent within those categories through the thresholds, within the thresholds that were outlined with board. The newest one, the Supplemental American Rescue Plan, we haven't spent that money yet, so there's no need for the revised plan. But what we're asking for is a revised plan related to the CRISA and ARPA institutional MSI. You could see here, that's really the first three columns. We, those three plans in total end up being the 797939. The revised plan is that column right next to that, and you really could see the variance. And essentially, what we had asked the colleges, you know, when they started doing their financial planning this year, is to take a look up at their spending plans and how they plan to use the remaining CRISA and ARPA funds, just to make sure that they were in line with the initial plans that were approved. And as you can see, what a lot of colleges are doing is, going back to my initial point, is that a lot of colleges, when the initial plan were approved, didn't fully anticipate, I think, the amount of lost revenue that... I think, the amount of lost revenue that they were going to be able to claim. And so a lot of the colleges are revising their plans to claim that lost revenue, which as, you know, really helps out with the bottom line in the colleges to be able to close out the year in balance. And that is the last slide for that.
Are there any questions for our CFO? Mr. Cologne?
Where would the additional $245 million that's left to claim go towards?
Well, I think that's, so we're asking for a revised plan, the bulk of that is going to be spent on claiming lost tuition revenue.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Is that going to be an acceptable category? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, we couldn't use it towards tuition initially.
Yes, you're exactly right.
Right. So, so we're claiming it as revenue loss. So, so can you explain to me how that applies?
Sure. Under the, you're absolutely right. So under the CARES Act, right, so the rules on how to use the federal funds was promulgated to, through various, like FAQs that the issued was the US DOE. The CARES was absolutely strictest and did not allow us to do that. In the second round, the, what we're calling CRISA, they opened that up, and since then, we've been allowed to do that. Yeah.
As long as it lasts.
As long as it lasts, right? And you had a March deadline, what happens to December 31st? Can we move that up a little bit?
I think, because most of the colleges are going to use on lost revenue, there's about six colleges that are using, that didn't have enough lost revenue and lost enrollment. And I think, you know, what we're planning to do is, we've had conversations with them, and we're going to continue those conversations, and if we need to pivot sometime in early in the year, just to make sure those six colleges spend anything. It's definitely a priority.
And locally, it's localized to?
Six colleges.
Six colleges. I mean, the rest of the people is just using it as revenue loss, it's an easy category.
We'll help them to lose a lot more revenue.
I'm sure left to your own devices, you will. Ouch, ouch. In any case, in any case, are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions from our CFO? Hearing none, I'll move this item. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B2 is approved. Item B3 is a resolution to authorize a contract with Anthology Incorporated for a customer relationship management solution. The university's current contract for the CRM solution is scheduled to expire on October 14th, 2023. The university issued an RFP on June 18th, 2021, with a due date of January 27, 2022, for bidders to submit their proposals. Four bidders responded and were evaluated by a committee comprised of personnel from the various colleges and central office, and Anthology was selected as the only responsive bidder to award the contract for a CRM solution. University seeking approval from the Board to authorize a contract in an amount not to exceed $11.6 million, which is comprised of $4,125,000 for implementation, and $1,495,000 each year for license, maintenance, and support over a period of five years. Executive Vice Chancellor and university provost, Wendy Hensel, is available to provide further background or answer any questions if you require. Are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none, I'll move approval of item B3. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B3 is adopted. Item B4 is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with First Transit Incorporated for Transportation Services, the College of Staten Island. The university, on behalf of the College of Staten Island, entered into a contract dated October 16, 2017, with First Transit, following a public solicitation process that was awarded to First Transit as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for a five-year term in an amount not to exceed $9,652,168. The contract expired on October 15, and CSI has only expended $4,663,176,020 of the total contract value. CSI seeks to extend the existing contract for a period of up to one year for an amount not to exceed $1,295,026.07, to allow CSI to conduct necessary market exploration and optimization of the requirements for future solicitation. CSI's Assistant Vice President for Finances and Budget is available to provide further information. Are there any questions on this? Because I have a few.
This contract doesn't require any additional funds, it's coming out of what was originally allocated for the, for the first contract, is that correct?
That's correct. It was suspended because of COVID and, yeah.
So from that initial allocation, we have money left over. Wrong?
Yes.
Let me, anyone else have a question or comment? I've asked this question before on CSI. Memory serves, and it does, I think, New York City bus has a line that roughly replicates the root of this. Am I incorrect in some way?
Good evening. There are, there is an S-62 and an S-92, 58 stops that run from St. George Ferry Terminal to outside the campus, and there is an S-93 that runs from 86th and Fourth Avenue in Brooklyn to the center of the campus. Limited service, does not run consistent with the schedule that we run classes. The ferry service that we run through this contract runs a direct line from the ferry terminal to the campus. It's about a 25 to 30-minute straight line, doesn't stop in between, and comes into the campus, and we have a loop bus on the campus, specifically scheduled to coincide with the schedules that we run on campus.
So when this committee next meets to consider this within a year, are you saying that you will have for us some information as to proposed future usage? Because it seems to repeat some of the services that are already offered by the MTA, however you describe a line and a half for your purposes?
We currently, there's been many changes in the industry, and we are requesting this extension in order to do that market exploration. A lot has changed. Transportation solutions have changed, enrollment has changed, and supply chain challenges. So we really need more time to understand exactly what our solution is, and we currently have an RFI on the street trying to solicit that information to guide us on our future solicitation.
Is the college itself conducting a study? Or is it going to require an outside vendor to perform that study?
The college is asking for information from the industry in order to assess what are, what's available and that will meet our needs under the current environment.
Do we have, and will we continue to get usage information? How many trips do you take in every day? What the peaks and valleys are, et cetera?
Yes, we can provide that, absolutely.
You're a little ill-prepared for this, for this item, but I want to keep it positive. I presume by the next time we meet, we will have the information that we've been seeking.
I'll make sure you get that information.
Thank you. I'll approve, I'll move to approve B4 with the reservations that I've already stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Point of information?
Sure.
What does this mean regarding the committee's next meeting? Are we going to be discussing this again at the next meeting?
When next we meet, we were told that we would have this information. Whenever that is, I presume it will be on our desks.
Thank you.
Am I wrong?
We have information ready to provide.
Item B4 has been moved, and is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B4 is approved. Item B5 is to approve Personnel Matters Report and the Finance, of the Finance Administration Committee. Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee contains the non-faculty employee actions previously considered, contained in the Committee for Faculty Staff and Administration Report. These are actions specifically requested by the Board on October 28, 2018, and not inclusive of all employee actions. All university appointments go through a thorough assessment and approval process prior to committee review, which may include Personnel and Budget Committee recommendations, presidential approval, university budget, budget office clearance, and/or compensation analysis. Personnel Matters Report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered by the colleges and central office into the CUNY system of record between August 27, 2022, and August, and October 21, 2022. The report contains a total of 50 ECP actions, including 17 acting appointments, 14 regular appointments, eight separations, and 11 salary changes. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is here to provide further background or answer any questions you may have. Hearing none, I'll move approval of item B5. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B5 is approved. Item B6 appoints Sharon Warren Cook as Vice President of Student Affairs at Kingsborough Community College, effective December 13, 2022, at an annual salary of $176,438, subject to financial ability. Dr. Cook will serve on the president's senior leadership team, who will be responsible for supervising high school partnership programs, College Now, and the Early College Initiative, among other program services for students with disabilities, student judicial affairs, and the Trio Grant. Again, among other, among other activities. Dr. Cook holds a PhD in curriculum and teaching from the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and an MA in social work from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, and a BA in psychology from North Carolina Central University. President of Kingsborough Community College, highly recommends this appointment. Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is available to provide further background. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Hanna?
No questions, I just wanted to give my support for this appointment.
I'm sorry?
No questions, I just wanted to express my support for this appointment.
Good. If there are no other questions, I'll move approval of B6. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B6 is approved. Item B7 approves, appoints Manuel Romero as Vice President of Communications and External Affairs at LaGuardia Community College, effective December 13, 2022, at a salary of $160,000, subject to financial ability. I'll dispense with reading his qualifications. Suffice it to say, he's qualified. And suffice it to say, it's getting late in the day. Vice Chancellor Gloria will be able to provide further background should you require it, but apparently you do not. So, this has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item B7 is approved. Item B8 is a resolution to authorize a requirements agreement with New York City Department of Education to provide degree and certification services for teachers and teacher candidates. This, I don't know if you've had a chance to read this, this is a very big deal.
Yeah.
I won't go into all of it. This is huge for us, huge for the DOE, huge for student teachers, to come right through our system. This is what we're built to do.
So we get money, we don't have to pay somebody else?
And more of our campus participated, more students are available.
Yeah, it's kind of good news, but also it's, it's what we do. So this is a request from the Board to allow the university to charge resident tuition rates for all students covered under this contract, and to waive the difference between resident and non-resident for out-of-state students participating in this program, which is consistent with previous contracts and practices. Executive Vice Chancellor and university provost, Wendy Hensel, is available to answer any questions, which I know you do not have. So I'll move it. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Can I just check, recognize someone that worked very, very hard as part of the OAA team in making this deal happen, which is our dear education, Ashley Thompson, who's sitting there in the audience? Want to recognize her hard work?
Thank you.
Well done. And thank you. Okay, item B8 is approved. With no more items on the policy calendar, Section 2 Information Items, Section 2A, Information Item 2A is a final fiscal year 2022 financial report, and 2B is the Fiscal Matters Information Report. Christina, would you like to report on both or comment on both?
Yeah, just really quickly for the, the final fiscal 2022 report, we had brought the preliminary report at, at the last board meeting, we had said we'd come back with the final report. There was nothing really major that I wanted to, you know, announce that really was a change. I think the biggest thing we did is the format of the first page. We made it very clear, I think, this time around, of how much federal funding we're using to cover expenses, about $57 million, and how much federal fund we're using to close out the structural deficit. It was about $238 million. So that's the only thing I wanted to just report on that.
Questions or comment? Well, there are no further matters, so that being the case, I'll move adjournment. Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.